Good evening, I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, October 9th. We have a busy agenda tonight and many people here today in attendance at Town Hall. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I'd like to provide the public with an update on the school committee's ongoing negotiations with the Shrewsbury Para-Educator Association, or SPA. We did have our 16th meeting on Monday, September 23rd, this past Monday. We continue to make progress and remain optimistic that we will reach an agreement. For more information on our negotiations, please visit the district's website at schools.shrewsburyma.gov. Click the "School Committee" tab and then click the link to our September 20th, 2024 Communication to the Public. As an update to that communication that is posted, it should be noted that SPA did provide a counterproposal at this past Monday's meeting to the school committee. We're in the process of reviewing this proposal and we're very appreciative for their efforts. I believe we align on many of the items in their current counterproposal. With that, we will proceed to the first item on the agenda, which is "Public Participation." Before we get started, just a few references to school committee policy, number 1, 2, 3, "Public Participation at School Committee Meetings." Under Section 5, it states, "Five or more speakers sign up to engage in public comment." Then each speaker would be allowed two minutes to present their material. I did advise each of the five speakers tonight that I will allow three minutes each and I will maintain that commitment tonight. However, for future meetings, if five or more request to address the committee, we'll limit that to two minutes per person. Also, in Section 10 of Policy Number 1, 2, 3, it is important to note that "Public Participation is not a time for debate or response to comments by school committee members. Comments made during public participation do not reflect the views or the positions of school committee." In other words, school committee members' role during this process of public participation is to listen but to not respond to the comments that are made. We have received, as I mentioned, five requests to address the committee tonight. I will call you up individually to the wooden podium here to my right, in the order these requests were received. You will each have three minutes to address the committee, as I mentioned. I would ask that you introduce yourself and your affiliation with the school district as you begin your comments. With that said, I'd like to call Kelly Fineran to the podium.
Good evening. I am Kelly Fineran. I'm a 4th grade teacher at Calvin Coolidge School. I'm also president of the Shrewsbury Education Association and I'm a town resident. I'm speaking here tonight in support of the para association as they work to solidify their fair and equitable contract. Although I know the school committee and those here tonight actually know how invaluable the paras are, I'm going to speak from the heart of being a Shrewsbury educator with 36 years of teaching experience. I could not imagine doing my job educating my 4th graders without the support of these paras. The paras in our district go above and beyond to meet the academic and social emotional growth of some of our most needy children. Throughout the state, districts have recognized the need for the skills of para educators and have made some major, excuse me, adjustments to their pay scales. To be honest, neighboring communities such as Worcester, Northborough, and Westborough certainly have. When I sat down and I compared the rate of pay per hour for an experienced classroom para in our district who is at step nine of their contract, I saw that they were currently making $21.96 an hour. If that same para was to work in Worcester, their base pay, which means having no experience, would be $31.04 an hour. That's a difference of $9.08 per hour less. If that same para was on the highest step of their contract in Worcester, they'd be making $35.12 per hour. The difference in pay per hour is close to $14 there. If that para was to work six hours a day, that would mean about $84 more per day or $420 more per week just to work one town over. If that same para was to work in Northborough or Southborough, their pay at step nine would be $30.99 per hour. And if they worked in Westborough, their pay at step nine would be $31.65 per hour. This range is a difference of $9 per hour more than Shrewsbury, up to $9.69. This means that based on working six hours a day, that para actually would make approximately $9,700 more per year in any of the three districts that I just mentioned. And that is quite a difference. Yet this is just an example of only one of the categories of the para contract. There are other categories such as tutors, media specialists, ABA technicians, or speech assistants and codas that are in the same situation. We are certainly blessed that many of our paras are experienced and the ones here are mentoring and training some of the new para educators and often providing the consistency with the revolving door of the newer staff that will come in and out. They do not receive a stipend for their mentoring, they don't have longevity payments for being here 20, 30 years, some of them. And as a classroom teacher, I can speak and share that having a para in your room that has years of experience is truly a gift to the students, never mind to the educators. At this point, I'm here to state that the Shrewsbury Education Association certainly stands behind and strongly supports the para educators in their efforts to negotiate a fair and equitable contract. They deserve to be paid comparable and equitable wage. Thank you so much for your time.
Next up is Noreen Christie.
Thank you, Ms. Wensky. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. As many of you may know, I've been working as a para educator in Shrewsbury for 18-plus years. I lived in Shrewsbury while my three children were in school and I'm very proud to say they all received a first-class education through Shrewsbury Schools. I came to you tonight to ask that you help the present and the future students in Shrewsbury continue to get a first-class education by supporting the para educators in their contract negotiations. When we began negotiating last December, I told the board that my salary for the 18-plus years has been giving me an increase of a little more than $6 per hour. My health insurance costs last year accounted for almost half of my income. Why do I stay? Because I love my job, I love the students that I support at the high school, I work in biology, chemistry, advanced math, physics, all high-level academics. And at our last negotiations, we are decreasing our salary, asked for an increase of $1.34 was what we have negotiated so far. How do you think that makes me feel? Thank you.
Next up, Caroline Donahoe.
My name is Caroline Donahoe and I'm a resident of Shrewsbury. I'm in my 10th year as a literacy tutor at the Floral Street School and I am speaking today on behalf of the literacy, math, English language, and academic tutors in Shrewsbury. Shrewsbury tutors support students who struggle academically. These students are either performing significantly below grade level, for example, a 4th grader reading at a 2nd grade level, or who are English language learners trying to learn grade-level content as they also learn English. These students require intensive individualized instruction, which tutors are responsible for developing and providing. We write our own lesson plans that directly target these students' learning styles and academic needs. During a six-hour day, a full-time tutor will instruct 10 groups of students across multiple grade levels with a caseload of up to 25 students per day. In your letter to the Shrewsbury community, the school committee stated that two of your priorities are to, 1, attract and retain excellent people to work in our district, and 2, to pay a fair wage based on the market for similar school districts. So let's talk about attracting quality tutors. Every Shrewsbury tutor holds a bachelor's degree and more than half hold at least one master's degree. Tutors have an average of 13 years' experience in education prior to becoming tutors in roles such as lead teacher, reading specialist, ESL teacher, math teacher, curriculum developer, and interventionist. In addition, we have an average of seven years' experience being a tutor in Shrewsbury. So, well done on attracting excellent tutors. But let's turn to the second priority, paying a fair wage. Since 2012, the tutor salary scale has not been modified other than the annual adjustment of 1.5% to 2.5%. Looking at the last five years where tutors have been at the top step, that averages out to approximately 55 cents added to the hourly wage each year. That is shamefully low. Currently, all tutors are on the top step of our salary scale and all new tutors are being hired in at the top step as well. We need a fresh pay scale. This year, Westborough tutors at our comparable level will earn $36 per hour. That is 35%, or nearly $10 per hour higher than our current hourly wage and 27% higher than what the school committee has offered us. Likewise, tutors in Hopkinton, Worcester, and Northborough receive significantly higher wages in addition to payments for longevity and education levels. Shrewsbury tutors request that the school committee increase our hourly wages to align with the requirements of our job, the quality of our staff, and the wages of surrounding communities. Thank you.
Next up, Wesley Engvall.
My name is Wesley Engvall. I live in Auburn because I can't afford to live in the town that I work in. My father grew up in Shrewsbury. I'd like to start by saying, Dr. Sawyer, you yourself in the year 2021 received an increased salary of $32,175. That is more money than the lowest-paid paras making an entire year. And it really does, in my view, reflect the fact that we are a very top-heavy administration in this town. Your priorities are skewed away from the most essential workers who work directly with the most vulnerable students. And it has an impact on us. We're human beings, we're not numbers on a spreadsheet. You have to look up from your budgets and see the people in front of you and realize the value that we have as human beings and as members of the school community. Exploiting dedicated, selfless people is not equity, and I've heard the word equity thrown around quite a bit as a value that you hold. Let's talk about equity. Denying paras longevity that is awarded to teachers is not equity. Forcing low-income paras hired after September 2021 onto a high deductible healthcare plan of $2,000 is not equity. I myself am $120 shy of hitting my high deductible plan that started in July. In fact, the school committee denied a $50,000 mitigation fund that we had tried to negotiate for for para educators, which could easily be paid for by the salary increase of the superintendent alone. Not being able to afford to live in the town you work in is not equity. Some paras make just slightly too much money to qualify for government assistance and they work in a public school. Others take food about to be thrown away off students' lunch trays to take home to feed their own children. This is obscene and an injustice and not a result of a lack of funds, but for a lack of prioritizing essential staff who work directly with the most vulnerable students. So I ask you tonight, I am very proud to say in just one and a half weeks, just before this meeting started, we have reached over 1,000 people in this community who have reached out to you directly, asking you to settle a fair contract with para educators in Shrewsbury. We should be tremendously proud of that effort, that very small number of people have made that kind of impact. You've said before that you, you as a school committee, are responsible to represent the taxpayers. They have spoken, they support us. So I ask you to please pay us like we matter because we do. Thank you very much.
Next up is Cindy Belanger.
My name is Cindy Belanger. I am currently a CSP at Shrewsbury High School. This is my 10th year as a para in the Shrewsbury Public School System. The school committee's current negotiation proposal to the SPA for 2425 has 28 child-specific aides, child-specific paras at the top step of the NC3 wage scale, which puts their annual pay at $2,671.08 below the state and federal poverty level for a family of four. And 72 instructional para educators and special ed instructional para educators at the top step of the NC3 wage scale, which puts their annual pay at $3,271.08 below the state and federal poverty level for a family of four. That's a total of 100 paras, or 35% of the 282.7 current full-time paras that are below the state and federal poverty level for a family of four. I plan to read to you the two-page or 48 essential functions, responsibilities, required skills, experience, competencies, physical demands, and work environment listed in a CSP's child-specific para's job description to demonstrate what is required of our position for a pay that is below the poverty level. But no matter how much I practiced, I couldn't read them in under four minutes and 10 seconds. So here are a few I chose to highlight. Provide all accommodations delineated within a student's designated IEPM 504. Provide academic support based on classroom assignments and curriculum presented. Ability to respond to emergency situations, example injured students, fights, behavior problems, abusive students, etc. The job is performed under conditions with exposure to risk of injury or illness, although in a clean environment. May assist students with physical or cognitive disabilities with grooming, feeding, toileting, and diapering. The employee must be able to work in a noisy, stressful, high-pressure environment and still be able to concentrate and keep children safe. Assist in the development of portfolios for MCAS when appropriate. Assist in the facilitation of MCAS based on accommodations. Ensure that all accommodations outlined in D cap district curriculum accommodation plan are implemented based on student needs. Work flexibly in a changing environment. The employee is frequently required to stand, walk, sit, use hands, reach with hands and arms, and stoop, nail, crouch, crawl, climb, or run. May potentially work one-to-one, or one-to-two, or other designated ratio depending on the nature of the disability and learning needs. May work with a small group or whole of students to facilitate lessons and activities following the classroom teacher's instructions. May participate and facilitate in community activities, example vocational, travel, training, independent living skills. Provide academic support based on classroom assignments and curriculum presented. These are just a few of the 48 two-page job description and responsibilities that we have that, under your current proposal, we would be making below poverty level. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. That concludes tonight's "Public Participation." For the public, in the future, if anybody wishes to speak at a public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. And thank you again for your comments. The next item on our agenda is Chairperson's and Members' Reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
No.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I did want to announce a piece of news that's been shared internally in our school district, which is that Barbara Malone, our Executive Director of Human Resources, who is currently in her 13th year in that role here in our school district, has announced that she's going to retire at the close of the school year, at the end of June. Obviously, there will be time in the future to thank Ms. Malone and to show appreciation for the enormous amount of work that she's done over the past decade-plus in order to provide a really incredibly important service to our district that supports our employees. She'll be doing a report later this evening about our personnel hiring for the current school year, but I did want to let the community know that Ms. Malone has informed us of her retirement. We will be doing a needs assessment of our human resources function in the not-too-distant future and, obviously, when the time comes, we'll be posting for the search for her successor. But did want to let the community know that Ms. Malone will be retiring at the end of this fiscal year, at the end of June. I also wanted to mention a couple of issues that we've seen in the news recently. One is that you've probably seen that across the nation, there's been an increased level of rumors and, in some cases, threats made against schools, threats of violence or in particular school shootings. This typically happens with more frequency after a tragedy, the most recent one in Georgia, of course, back in the beginning of the school year. But it seems that there has been more of this kind of activity, for some reason, across the country. As with any other societal issue, we are not immune from this. And we have seen, we did communicate with our middle-school families a couple of weeks ago about a couple of things that students brought to our attention, that we partner, of course, with the Shrewsbury Police Department to make sure anytime someone raises a concern, it's thoroughly investigated. And fortunately, we're found to be not having merit in terms of any particular threat. That said, we continue to encourage our students and our community, our families, our staff, that if they are aware of something that's concerning to them, that they make a school administrator aware right away. We do also have a reporting function at the top of our website, on our homepage, on each of our pages, where someone can anonymously report a concern. And the idea of seeing something and saying something is very important because we know, and we heard last year when we had the safety and security audit done by a firm with expertise, tragedies can be averted when people are made aware of something that's concerning to them. And that's probably the most important thing that we can do to keep our schools safe, is to develop strong relationships with our students and to make sure that they feel comfortable telling a trusted adult if there's something that's concerning to them. Fortunately, the odds of something happening remain low overall, but none of us, of course, can deny the reality of violence in our schools across our nation, something that we work very hard to prevent and, of course, practice ways to respond if there were a situation. But I did want to mention that that is something that is top of mind for us. I appreciate our strong partnership with the Shrewsbury Police Department and with all of our public safety officials, and we continue to do the best work we can to be proactive and prevent any potential issues. The other issue I wanted to refer to this evening, and I was reminded, I have been reminded when I've been visiting schools as recently today, I spent a couple of hours at Beale School, that our district is a very diverse one with students from all over the globe. It's become more diverse over time and our community and our schools are the richer because of that. I'm sure many of you have seen news from across the globe that's troubling in a variety of ways, and it's important to recognize when our families, whether those are our staff members, whether those are families and parents of our students and our students themselves, when there is news that affects the country or the part of the world that they're from, it affects them. And I want to acknowledge that and let people know that there's something that we are paying attention to. I also want to reiterate that when there is rhetoric that targets individuals based on their race or their ethnicity, their religious practice, we know that also is very troubling. And I want to reiterate that we want all of our students, all of our families, all of our staff members, to feel unconditionally accepted for who they are and that they have a true sense of welcome and a sense of belonging in our schools. I think our staff has done an outstanding job of that over time and that they continue to do that. I appreciate that. Our staff and our community generally has worked to make that sense of belonging and acceptance and welcome a reality. We will continue to work hard at that. I think we're fortunate that we have not experienced some of the things that other districts and other parts of the country have, but obviously, if we were, it's something that we would deal with very seriously and with, in a way that supports our students, our staff, and our families. So that I wanted to refer to this evening, and that is Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is under policy, the Recommendation of the District's Strategic Goals and Action Steps for 2024-2025. In April of 2023, the school committee voted unanimously to approve an updated five-year strategic plan for the district. In September, school committee members met with members of the SPF's leadership team to review the draft goals and action steps for the district that will advance the district's strategic priorities during the 2024-2025 school year. The draft was subsequently reviewed by the full district leadership team. The draft, which was provided to us under separate cover, has been presented to school committee to review and will be posted for a comment in advance of a proposed school committee vote at the October 9th meeting. So with that, hand it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. And Ms. Clodder has been instrumental in coordinating this work. She unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but I will just give a brief introduction and refer to the document that's been shared with you and that you've reviewed as a school committee. Going back to the summer, our leadership team worked at our annual workshop at taking a look at what our goals were this past year, the progress that we made. Just as a reminder, as you mentioned, we do have a brand-new strategic plan that we're now in the second full school year after having been adopted, and we think it's a strong plan. We are proud of the work that happened last year to advance a variety of our strategic priorities and goals. And a lot of what this year's proposed plan is really a lot of continuation of some of the same work, just either to the next level or the next step in the process. I think that the feedback we received from the community overall and from our staff overall and our students when that strategic plan, the five-year plan, was put together is reflected in this ongoing work in terms of what people felt was most important. I think it also reflects what our educators and our educational leaders feel that at this moment in time in public education in the United States and in Massachusetts are very important areas for us to focus on. So with that, I'll just refer to, and beyond that, that we began that work in the summer. In the early fall, the school committee had its annual workshop with the leadership team. You were able to review an initial draft that had been created and give feedback. We also reviewed this draft with the full district leadership team, and after this evening, we will post this on our website and certainly anyone in the community who wants to provide any feedback to the school committee or to me about this draft is welcome to do so, and we would ask that you formally vote to adopt our set of goals and action steps for this school year at your next meeting, which I believe is on October 9th.
9th.
Thank you. Two weeks from this evening. So just as a reminder, in terms of the overarching plan, there's three commitments that were made as a district, commitment to educational excellence, a commitment to the enhanced well-being of all, and a commitment to, and I always want to make sure, the optimization of our resources. And the plan or the goals for this year are organized according to those three commitments. Under each of those commitments, there are priorities that go with each one. The one on the screen right now is the second commitment around enhanced well-being of all, and there's five different priorities that are part of that five-year plan. So this is the framework under which these specific goals for this year are organized. In terms of the commitment to educational excellence, similar to last year, a very, very significant commitment and focus on literacy. We are adopting a new literacy program in full from grades kindergarten through grade six, the EL literacy curriculum. That is a major focus of our work in curriculum and instruction and assessment for this coming year. Similarly, we're continuing to look at a variety of ways to make sure we're supporting our staff and providing the elements of high-quality teaching. We're looking to make sure that we're providing whatever we can to make sure that our teachers who are outstanding are able to implement best practices in their classrooms. One area that's new this year that I'll make reference to here is having, doing some work collectively to look at the role of artificial intelligence in our schools. It's an issue that has been coming up more and more, and we need to, I think, and I believe that it makes sense, to do some work this, a process this year, we have various stakeholders look at that issue and make some recommendations about how our district should approach the use of artificial intelligence, whether that's in the classroom as a tool for learning or whether it's a tool for enhancing staff's work, but also, obviously, there are concerns about academic integrity and what the various challenges that artificial intelligence brings. So it's something that we look to have a study committee look at and bring back a report to you at some point during the year. So that's something that's new this year. Also, in the area, excuse me, of educational excellence is look- Also, in the area, excuse me, of educational excellence, is looking at making sure we're providing additional support for students who are demonstrating that they need it, doing frequent assessment of where students are relative to benchmarks, and then providing interventions to help them move towards those academic benchmarks throughout the course of the year, using various assessments, such as the STAR reading assessment, for example. We want to be sure that we've done a lot of work on having increasing access for students across all different demographic groups to high-level coursework, particularly at the high school. That's something we'll continue this year and sort of take to the next level. That's part of what this goals plan is for you, that's being presented this evening. In addition to that, career and technical education has been a very significant focus of the school committee for a few years now, since students from Shrewsbury started losing access to Asbit Regional Vocational Technical High School. We have launched some career pathways, innovation career pathways at Shrewsbury High School. There's important work that needs to continue to happen this year to make sure those are successful, and also continue some of the good work that's been happening around job exploration, career exploration, internship opportunities, job shadowing, those kinds of things. So continue to work there as well. And then, just to mention a couple of other pieces, you know, we continue to look at, how can we make sure that there are good systems in place to make sure all of our students are getting what they need, and that we're appropriately using data in a way that helps us improve practice within the classroom? In terms of enhanced well-being, again, a lot of continuation of work that's been happening over the past few years. We want to be sure that we're continuing to provide important professional development opportunities for our staff when it comes to inclusive practices and culturally proficient practices. Under this area, a big focus across the state and the nation, and certainly here as well, is reducing chronic absenteeism, which has increased since the pandemic. We've made some progress there, but we have work to do to get even better at that. Our goal is to reduce that by 10% this year compared to last year. In addition to that, we're looking to make sure that, as we mentioned last week when we reported out, we continue to have an emergency homeless shelter operating within our town. We also have a significant increase in newcomer students generally. So making sure we're providing the right kinds of supports to help those students be successful will continue to be key. And in terms of social and emotional learning and that sense of belonging, which I referred to in my earlier comments, we do measure that in a way through using the Panorama survey that we give to students a couple of times a year. We'd like to see the questions that are connected to that sense of belonging increase by 5% from the fall baseline to the spring. Beyond that, we want to continue to focus on wellness overall for both our students and our staff, whether that's looking at continuing to monitor the impact of the changes we made to our start times and student sleep health, looking at continuing to develop a culture of well-being across our staff to address workplace stress, which is a reality in every profession, of course, including education. We're also looking at our food service program in terms of student well-being. That's changed a great deal because of the advent of no-cost meals for students across the Commonwealth. The number of students taking advantage of eating meals that are served by our cafeterias has increased substantially. So how can we look at making sure we're providing healthy options and a variety of options in a very compressed amount of time, and we have to get lots of kids through to actually receive their meals? So that's something that we're going to be looking to work with a consultant to propose some improvements for that program as we move forward in this sort of new landscape. Beyond that, we're also looking at, in particular, and based on feedback we received last year, student behavior and discipline practices is something that we want to be focusing a great deal on this year. We are committed to implementing the first phase of what's known as positive behavior interventions and supports, or more commonly known as PBIS. We are launching that work, have launched that work, and that will be an important overall, a year of initial implementation. In this particular year, it'll be a multi-year approach, but we believe it will be some very concrete steps we can take this year that will help improve in that area as well. Continue to focus on student mental and behavioral health, and making sure that we are continuing to focus on ways to support students in those areas, so a variety of goals relative to that. And in addition, finally, in terms of safety and security under well-being, there were various actions, many of which we don't talk about publicly, because they're part of our safety and security plan, but continuing to look to find ways to work with our partners to improve school safety and security. So that continues to be an area of focus as well. And then finally, the last area, under optimization of resources, this is the area where we look at how are we best making use of our budgetary resources, our fiscal resources? How do we continue to work to seek other available, whether that's grants or philanthropic donations? That's something that we've prided ourselves on for a long period of time and have done very well with. We want to continue that good work. The school committee is committed to continuing to partner with the select board around options for continued financial stability, thanks to the 2021 override. We have enjoyed the greatest level of financial stability that we've had in this district during my career here, and I'm now in my 28th year. That's something we all want to see continue, but that's going to take continued work and partnership. And I know that's something that the school committee and I and our leadership team are committed to. Obviously, and as from the comments earlier this evening, we are in the process of negotiating a successor contract with the Shrewsbury Parent Educators Association. We will have contract negotiations beginning this year. We're in the last year this year of contracts with our Teachers Association, the SEA Unit A, as well as Unit B, which represents our assistant principals, and our Cafeteria Food Service Association as well. So there'll be a variety of contract negotiations. I know that the school committee is committed to trying to achieve win-win agreements that benefit our employees and are sustainable in terms of the financial resources that the district has. Later on, Ms. Malone will report out, but we'll continue working on our diversification project around our teaching staff. And that's something that has been a very big focus at the state level, that we are certainly doing our part locally as well. And then, in the last kind of areas, partnering with our families, that's part of our mission as our school district, finding ways to make sure that we're reaching out in a variety of ways to all of our families, especially those who may not have more difficulty connecting with us, whether that's because of a language barrier or socioeconomic barriers. We've done some really good work here, but we have more to do, and that's something I'm excited about continuing. That's the, in addition to that, working with some of our parent groups, PTOs, booster groups and whatnot, looking at how can we make sure that all of our students have equitable access to enrichment programming, to the various kinds of things that we offer in terms of co-curricular activities and those kinds of things, something we want to continue to look at that we can address. And then last, but certainly not least, we will find out in December whether the Massachusetts School Building Authority is inviting the town of Shrewsbury into their process to look at a potential addition to Shrewsbury High School to address the chronic overcrowding we have there. If they do issue that invitation, there'll be a great deal of work to do to move that process forward. So that's an overview of what the goals this year to advance those five-year priorities are, and would be happy to hear any questions or comments from the school committee. Again, we'll post this online, and any feedback that the community has can be provided before we ask you to vote on this at your meeting on October 9th.
Great, thank you very much, colleagues. Questions or comments? Ms. Savernan?
Yeah, I want to just acknowledge that we began this process, Mr. Wensky, I sat in your seat, as we started this a couple of years ago. And at the time, I think we were coming out of COVID, and we thought there are so many things that we're doing. I think that while the plan is lengthy and nearly 20 pages long, it is also an attempt to organize the many facets of work that are going on in this district and frankly, in this town. There are individuals who aren't even school employees who are identified as being important, like school buildings, as important contributors to our overarching success. And when I think about the amount of work that is getting done on behalf of our students and our residents, and frankly, our taxpayers, everything from, I want to really call out and appreciate an initial focus on literacy, of course, to pilot at K-6, but to also really lean into seven and eight, where we know we have some continued work to do to address some gaps that have certainly really reared up post-COVID. But also, our attempts to be more data-driven in many different aspects as we can, is oftentimes sometimes more data than you know what to look at. And here, this was an attempt to say, these are the things that are going to be most important to us at a high level, and what we're sort of committing to say we're going to pay attention to and try to move the needle on. I'm incredibly happy with the way that not only are we striving towards excellence, but when we think about that access for all, whether it's CTE, or homeless students, or PBIS, or chronic absenteeism, the different sort of groups of students that sometimes need something extra to help move them along, and how they're captured here. And then when we sort of wrap kind of all of this, to me, on optimization of resources, those are many, many, but not all of those have the school committee tagged on them, because it is often the choices, the difficult choices that we're trying to make between all those competing priorities. And I think it's fair to the public to tell them who's responsible for these things, who's making those decisions? How are we trying to balance what is the 15 pages that come before of important resources? And kind of make sure that we're moving this district forward? And so, I'm, I am, I hope more people will look at it. I hope we'll get lots of clicks. Maybe we can tell how many people click on it, Dr. Sawyer. But not only do I welcome feedback from the public, I want to just really appreciate the work over the last couple of months with your leadership team to continue to make edits and move this along, because a strategic plan should be a living document that revolves, that evolves and changes over time. And so I'm quite happy with the progress that we're making, and I hope we'll hear back from the public with any feedback that they might have for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions?
Yep, just to add on to what Ms. Savernan said, you know, this is a living document, and it's a roadmap for us and the district to use as we move forward. And it needs to be fluid because things change. And I think back to when we started in 2020, and now to 2024, a lot has changed. And we're dealing with different issues now and different priorities. And as our fiduciary responsibility as a school committee, we always have to look at that optimization of, you know, resources. And the budget is our biggest job. So there's a lot we want to do, things we can't do, things that we want to look to do better and change. I do feel that this is, it's a continuation of what was started in the last year. However, I do feel it is very ambitious. There's a lot in here, and that does concern me for staff who are dealing with issues sometimes that take a lot of time out of their day of just normal educational services and even for administration. So I like this. I think it was a very collaborative process. I really enjoy sitting with administration and hearing their thoughts on what should be done or what needs to be added. So I support it, but I do think it is ambitious, because the climate of public education has changed tremendously, and there's a lot more that goes on during the day. So thank you, Dr. Sawyer and staff, for putting this together.
Ms. Riff?
I mean, I agree with both my colleagues. I appreciate the work that's got into this. It's been a very collaborative process, and like what Ms. Riff said, working with the district and hearing exactly what's going on in each of the buildings and how the plan can change and improve, that was a really good thing to hear, for us to hear about. We have strong goals, and there's been, I feel like, a concerted effort to spread the workload so that we're not overwhelming necessarily one group. We have the superintendent, our assistant superintendents, the school committee, building leaders, IT, reading specialists, curriculum coordinators, HR counselors, you could go on, PTOs, families, and we all own a piece of this pie to further our district goals. And I appreciate that a lot of the goals that are in this plan are being continued from last year. And it wasn't a check-the-box, okay, yep, we met our goal last year, but how do we improve that? Or what changed in the landscape from last year to now that maybe we can kind of twist this goal a little bit? And this touches on so many different aspects of our district. I'm happy with this, the plan for the year, and I would like the community to look at it and to give us some feedback on it. But I do, I agree, there's a lot on here, but it's really good information for us, for the district, but also for the community to take a look at and see how we can work together to further the district.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. My colleagues, I think, I've always viewed a five-year strategic plan as a marathon, not a sprint. There's a lot in here. It's very thoughtful, it's very focused. We've got, you know, ownership across each of these goals and action steps. And I really appreciate the collaboration the school committee has with leadership team. We have these workshops annually, and this past, in earlier, in September, we had a really good discussion with the leadership about what is attainable within this plan. And as has been mentioned many times throughout this discussion, it's really public feedback that will be critical to the success of this plan. So I definitely encourage the public to take a look at it on our website, schools.shrewsburyma.gov, and provide us your feedback. Email us. Love to hear from you between now and our next scheduled meeting on October 9th. Any further comment, Dr. Sawyer?
I just appreciate the feedback and the comments, and want to reiterate, I think I mentioned at the beginning, but one of the things that our leadership team really took a very deep dive into this summer was the feedback we had directly from our staff and our families and even our high school students that we asked for in June. And that definitely informed much of this work as well. And I think that that's important, that we continue that tradition of making sure that we hear different voices of our different stakeholders as we determine, you know, where are we going to focus our energy. So we'll look forward to posting this, we'll make sure the link's available tomorrow, and we'll look forward to any feedback we receive.
Great, thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is also under policy. It's a second reading and vote on teen dating violence policy. For background, a first reading of a draft of policy 714, teen dating violence, was presented at the school committee meeting on September 11th, 2024. The draft was posted for public viewing and feedback in advance of the planned vote by the school committee on September 25th, tonight's meeting. Ms. Mouchet and Ms. Sharifahpour are working with Dr. Sawyer and the district's legal counsel regarding potential revisions to the draft, and an updated version with these changes has been provided to the committee under separate cover. So tonight, to walk through the updates and the feedback, we hand it over to Ms. Sharifahpour.
Thank you. At our previous school committee meeting on September 11th, we introduced our new policy, policy 714, teen dating violence, and we requested feedback from the community. We did receive feedback from one parent, and after considering the feedback we received, the subcommittee met and we made revisions to the original proposed policy. These modifications were reviewed by our legal counsel, and the updated policy was provided to you in your packets this week. As we discussed at our last meeting, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 2C, all Massachusetts school districts are required to have a policy and a discipline code in place to address dating violence in public schools. The policy needs to clearly state that dating violence will not be tolerated, and there needs to be guidelines for addressing alleged incidents of dating violence. Included without limitation in the policy, we need to define the issue of teen dating violence, the recognition of the warning signs, identifying issues of confidentiality, as well as safety, and appropriate legal school-based interventions. While the full policy will be available for the community's review on our website tomorrow, I did want to note a couple of the changes that are important to consider. In our first draft, we noted that retaliation against an individual who has complained about teen dating violence or cooperated in an investigation of teen dating violence will not be tolerated. We've expanded this to include intimidation as well. Shrewsbury Public Schools will also respond promptly to complaints and reports of teen dating violence, retaliation, or intimidation, and corrective action will be taken where necessary. Included in the warning signs of dating violence, we also expanded this and added use of third parties to communicate with the partner to intimidate or control a partner's behavior. And additionally, we updated who would be included in receiving the safety plan for a student. So at this time, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the proposed policy.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments? Ms. Savernan?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate the policy subcommittee for taking the feedback from the public and making some recommended changes. Obviously, this is an important issue, one we take very seriously, not just because there's a state law that says that we should, but because we don't want anyone to feel harassed, or that they're experiencing violence, or subject to any of these things within our buildings, and want to do whatever we can within the law to be able to help them. I think we've crafted, and this is a complicated area, oftentimes with overlapping things happening in courtrooms and things happening in school buildings. So I think it's more complicated than it may appear on its face, and I want to just really appreciate the time and effort that you put into to kind of thread the needle as best as we can on this topic. So thank you. Mr. Wensky, I'm in support.
Great. Any further comments or questions? Okay. Just to get back to my, okay. So with that, if there's no further comments or questions, I need to request a motion. Actually, further comments, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I appreciate the work that- No, I appreciate the work that Ms. Shree Fippor and Ms. Boucher did as the policy subcommittee in conjunction with our legal counsel. And I concur with the updates made in response to the feedback and recommend that you vote to adopt the policy this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so I need a motion that the committee vote to approve policy 714, teen dating violence as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is also under policy. It's a annual report on bullying statistics. The bullying prevention and intervention policy adopted in December of 2010 indicates that the superintendent or a designee shall report annually to the school committee regarding the frequency of bullying behaviors during the prior school year and update the committee regarding steps being taken in the schools to minimize such behaviors while promoting the continuous improvement of learning environments. The report has been enclosed for our review. And with that, I'll hand it to Dr. Sawyer to continue.
Thank you. The report that's in your packet has some statistics for this year. Let me preface it by saying again that under the statute that was passed back in 2010, there's a specific legal definition of bullying. Oftentimes, what is legally defined as bullying in what people perceive or claim to be bullying in terms of certain kinds of behaviors can be somewhat different. And what we don't want, certainly as a school district, is there to be some perception that we, we take something less seriously because it doesn't meet a certain legal definition. You see statistics in your, in your packet about allegations of bullying and then what qualified ultimately and was deemed by the school administrator to be actual bullying under the definition in the statute. And that was, you know, formally eight allegations at the elementary level, three of which were qualified. At the high school level, there were nine that were, and two that were determined to be qualifying. In middle schools, unusual statistic this year, there were 47 that were allegations and only one that was deemed to be qualifying, again with this legal definition. Certainly among all of those allegations, many were situations where students did not behave in accordance with our, our rules or our values and were, and received disciplinary consequences as a result. There are times, of course, where there are claims made by a student that after investigation don't hold up to the evidence, where there is a different perspective or misunderstanding or a variety of things. And our, our school administrators, our teachers and our frontline folks, paraprofessionals, teachers certainly deal with that initially. If things are more complicated or seem to be of a level of seriousness, they get referred to the principal and/or assistant principals of the school who will work through it. Our, our staff to support students in other ways, our adjustment counselors, our, sometimes our social work staff, sometimes our school psychologists and, and other school counselors at the high school level may get involved in ways to support students to work through different kinds of issues. And that can take a variety of approaches. But we know that in terms of the issue itself, and I'm going to, with the permission of the chair, refer to the next agenda item, which is how we may go about reviewing our policy and our practices and updating those as warranted in the coming weeks and months. It is a very important issue. It's an issue that even though back in 2010, when the law passed, cyberbullying was part of the law. The landscape in 2024 is different than the landscape in 2010. Things that our students are experiencing now online in, you know, different apps that didn't exist then. There is a, a level of issue. I know when I was speaking with one of the committee members earlier, talking about, you know, one of the areas in, at the elementary school had to do with, you know, cyberbullying of, of some nature. We're talking about students, you know, between ages kindergarten and grade four. So it's, it's something that I think behooves us as a school district to take a, a look at in terms of what is the landscape like at this point? How are we doing our best? You know, the policy is known as prevention and intervention. The more we can put into prevention and really making sure that we're doing what we can to be proactive, to try to have school environments where these kinds of behaviors don't occur to the greatest extent we possibly can, and how we can partner with our families. Because many of these situations bleed into issues that are happening in neighborhoods, in outside school activities, and certainly on the internet. And that's something that the more I think we can support our families in helping them with their children, the more we can support our educators and support staff and our school administrators and what are best practices as they've evolved over time in terms of investigating, in terms of addressing issues when they do come up in a fair manner and in a way that is, is as effective as possible. But again, what can we do to be proactive and to prevent as much of this from happening as we possibly can? I think it, it calls for us to do some work to both get some feedback from our different stakeholders. And right now, I am in the process of looking at a variety of options for us to get feedback about how people are perceiving we can best prevent this kind of behavior and respond to it. So I'll ask for people to be looking for that in the next few weeks for an opportunity to provide feedback in, in different ways. And then looking at, following a process that will not only take a look at the, the language that's in the, I mean, the, the school district's policy very much mirrors the language in the statute. But it's a statute that is, you know, originally was crafted in 2010. So are there updates we need to make to our language, to our policy, to our practices so that people can feel assured that it's an issue that we pay attention to, that we take seriously and we both prevent as best we can and then respond to effectively when we need to? So in terms of the report, the statistics you have there, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. But at the same time, also looking ahead to reviewing the, the terms of our policy and our practices. And my, my goal would be, I don't have a specific timeline, but, but loosely throughout this fall so that we could bring something to you either in November or at the latest early December with some recommendations for any updates to the policy itself or practices. But, you know, it doesn't stop there. It's a continuous process we have to be responsive to and an area aligned with our strategic goals that we just presented earlier, especially around how we can focus on things like positive behavior intervention and different approaches to help, again, make sure that our school environments are as positive and, and safe for students as they possibly can be. So with that, I'm happy to hear any questions or comments from the committee.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Ms. Fritz?
Just really a comment. I think, you know, when we look at this, and I do remember when we were talking about the cyberbullying in 2010 and that, you know, how do we respond to that and how much has changed in social media since then and students so young with access to social media? So I think for me, and I think I'm showing my age, it's that connection with our families that we really need to have a strong partnership with because it really does start at home. And then they can help support students at home, we can help support them at school, but that connection really needs to be there because it's very different from when we were growing up in the access and the ability for students to be bullied in a variety of ways in and outside of school is just tremendous. So to me, it's the partnership with our families and that is really important.
Further comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, Mr. Wensky, and you know, when I look at this, certainly Dr. Sawyer, and there's, you know, 64 allegations of bullying, do I want there to be zero? Of course I do. But then when I step back and just think about the topics that we have discussed this evening alone, from teen dating violence to bullying to AI and how AI, we know it can be used in, sometimes in conjunction with all of these things, right? And, and we hear about fake photos and all these other things to our need for safe buildings and hoax school shootings to technology in classrooms and technologies in children's pockets, right? Every, every moment. And when I think about what it takes for us to have safe buildings and safe environments and staff that are promoting those cultures, but that we're also asking students to learn and, and sort of put all that aside and focus every single day. And I completely agree with Ms. Fritz. We have, we have, you know, we have nearly 6,000 students, 1,000 staff and tens of thousands of family members who sometimes are part of sporting events and all sorts of things where we engage the community to come in and how important when we think about holistically safety, each one of these, we can pull them off on their own and we should do the important work. You're suggesting, Dr. Sawyer, certainly on bullying and I'm supportive of that. But how we think about safety holistically, you know, we're just earlier, even in our, our plan, talking about the safe buildings and locks on doors and all these other sorts of things that we have to think about. And so it's important that I think our community appreciate your, your point, Ms. Fritz, that complexity of education today as compared to just a few decades ago. And I'm not saying that there weren't incidences of, of whether teen dating violence or bullying, but that complexity of what that looks like and how it kind of manifests itself, I think, in our, in our schools and in our classrooms certainly does feel quite, quite different. And so I appreciate the efforts, Dr. Sawyer, over the coming months or whatever the right timeframe would be, I wouldn't want to be artificial on, on that, but that we get, we get, we get the right feedback from folks to, to make sure we're charting a, a good path forward. So I really want to just appreciate that effort.
Right. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. This is a very important issue and I mean, times have changed significantly since 2010. You know, certainly our dependency on technology has increased significantly as well, especially since COVID and the dependency of just, you know, daily learning from the iPad and just, and our administrators' roles have, have gotten a lot more challenging beyond the walls of the schools as well and into the cyber arena. So definitely very important to take a very careful, thoughtful approach to this and engagement with the community and families is critical here. And I think we need to take, take our time and make sure that we, we, we get this right and that it becomes a living document because things change. AI is certainly going to change things over time as well. So any further comments, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I appreciate the feedback and, you know, some more to come, but it's, it's an important topic and want to make sure we're, we're giving it the time and attention that we need to, to try to see if we can, where we can provide better support for everyone involved, students, families and our, and our staff.
Okay, great. So we covered those two items on the agenda. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda under Finance and Operations. It is a report regarding transportation services. Mr. Girardi and Ms. Yu will provide a report on transportation services at Schuenebury Public Schools that includes information on the district's contract with AA Transportation, current ridership, bus registration and late bus service. The report and a slide presentation have been enclosed to us and we'll review tonight. AA Transportation Division Manager, Mr. Robert Chevalier, will join Mr. Girardi and Ms. Yu for this report. So welcome and thank you for being here. Hand it over to Mr. Girardi.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. Chris Girardi, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. Again, joining me this evening, April Yu from the School Department, Bob Chevalier from AA Transportation. I'll walk us through some slides tonight. Both Bob and April will add some content where needed and they're here to answer any questions that you may have. Before I get started, I will ask April and Bob just to introduce themselves and to share a bit about their role in supporting transportation for Schuenebury Public Schools.
Robert Chevalier, AA Transportation, celebrating three years with the company as Transportation Manager for the town of Schuenebury. Good news, our routes are filled. CDL Training Department, very busy, hoping to have some sub-drivers in the morning. And better report than last year when we were about seven or eight drivers down and we were filling, you know, I was driving every day. And a lot, a lot of good news with regard to that as far as the, the driver retention and where we stand currently with the, with the routes. Very good.
My name is April Yu, Assistant Finance Operations Manager, and one of my main job functions is transportation. So currently, as of today, I was just checking the number, total registered for bus this year is 4,199, which, which is the highest ever. So, which is good news, which, which means our families, they trust the school bus operation and thinking it's a safe way for the kids to go to school. And we are using, this year we started to use Transpinder, which is a brand new software for bus routing. So it's a learning curve there, but thanks to AA and we team up and we got all the kids on the bus and it's so far, so good. It was a little challenging in the beginning, but yes, we, we, it was a busy beginning of the school year, but we, we're getting there. Thank you.
The two folks sitting next to me, I think, are the two kind of pillars of the collaboration that we have between the School Department and AA, which is just so invaluable in the climate that we live in with school transportation. So I'll get started here with our contract with AA. We are in year two of a five-year contract. It began in August 2023, last August, and it runs through August of 2028. This contract has a 6% annual increase over the term of the contract. That is, in this market, a very, you know, it's, that's a, it's strong for both AA and us as far as the percentage increases that we're seeing across, across the state. It's something that we feel very good about as we're seeing new contracts come on board with some companies that I will honestly say don't provide the service that AA does on a, on a daily and annual basis. So the budget is, is laid out here. This is what was budgeted for FY '25 with our regular day transportation, our special education, transportation, both through AA Transportation, and then we use other companies for some out-of-district transportation. Budgeted vocational transportation is, is the next one there at $195,563. This is a number that we're keeping an eye on. We'll talk in a few moments about what our vocational numbers are and different permutations of what transportation looks like there. And then the last piece there, it's our estimate of what our field trips, athletics, extracurricular costs will cost this year. We take last year's total numbers. We take some trips that we have this year that we did not take last year. We add our percentage increases and that's how we get our estimate for, for this column here. Total transportation budget of $5,446,458. So we provide different services through different vendors, primarily through AA, but we do have other vendors who provide some specialized service. All of our regular day transportation, including in-district special education and our late bus, is done by AA Transportation with three SPS Schuenebury vans that we have purchased or have received grant funding for, and those provide our day, our daily routing. We have out-of-district special education transportation. Again, these are varied providers and they transport students to their specialized programs across the state. Athletic competitions, extracurricular, music travel, again, that's all done by AA Transportation. Our homeless student transportation under the McKinnevento law, that is, again, varied. We have different van and shuttle services based on what student needs are. Our summer school, our special education summer school transportation is done by AA. Something that I don't have listed there is our out-of-district students do attend their summer programming as well and they tap into the very transportation that takes them during the school year. And then our field trips, which is our yellow bus service, that's done by AA Transportation. We do, you know, contract some coach buses for long trips and special events. So we shared this last year and I'd like to share it again. When we changed our school start times back in, prior to the start of the 23-24 school year, our mornings was something that we were really interested in, in adjusting where the, the first students were being picked up at 6:13 a.m. prior to our, our school start time change. And last year and this year, our earliest pickup is 7:00 a.m. with an average of 7:05 a.m. Those averages are on the earlier side. I think it's the way that, especially for the high school, the way that the town is laid out where students have to be picked up on the earlier side in order to get to Schuenebury High School, often driving across town to drop off prior to 7:30 a.m. So it's an average of 46 minutes more sleep opportunity now, whether students are taking it or not. But I know in my house, it definitely takes the edge off of getting, getting my children out to the school bus. And then for the middle schools, again, 7:13 is the earliest pickup time for middle school with an average of 7:18. Prior to the school, the start time change, we were looking at 7:36 a.m. as the first pickup with an average of 7:46. Okay. Our ridership. We'll walk through a couple of different kind of lenses of ridership. This is the total ridership that Schuenebury Public Schools, Schools provide for all of our, you know... our, you know, for all of our different transportations. We have 4,191. April just updated. We have eight, eight added this week to 4,199 students who ride Shrewsbury Public Schools. We do have an obligation to transport students to vocational technical schools, primarily Assabette Valley. Last year, we had 36 students registered to ride the bus. This year, we have 16. We did have scheduled two regular-sized buses to transport students to Assabette. We worked with Bob and his team and we are using vans to do that this year to optimize some space, some resources and some funds. We are obligated to provide transportation in, in district for St. John's, St. Mary's, Alhamra, Montessori. So those numbers, if you look at Assabette, it went down by 20 students. St. John's went up by 7,000 students. St. Mary's, Alhamra, Montessori, they're all within normal range. Montessori's down a little bit more than what we've seen in recent years. And our out-of-district students, we have 48 students that we are transporting to different programs. This also does include McKinnevento. So we do have some students who we transport from Shrewsbury out to the receiving towns and vice versa. And we, and with McKinnevento, we share the cost with the town that we're sharing that family with. So total daily riders, 4,381. Subtotal down from two, down two from 2023, 2024. We like to put this slide in just to show that the transportation fee does not cover all transportation costs. So 4,333 in-district students currently registered for home-to-school transportation. This is non-special education transportation. So this is pre-K to 12 at St. John's, Alhamra, et cetera. And the total in-district budget for that transportation home-to-school is $4,913,421. So just to run a simple math exercise, that's an average of $1,134 per student. So you can see our transportation fee of $320 per student, you know, for those who pay the full, the full fee, depending on the family's financial availability, it, it does not come close to covering the cost of transporting a child to and from So this graph here shows ridership for pre-K to 12 students in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. So it's just Shrewsbury. It takes out the private and vocational schools just to show our participation within district for our regular education ridership. So this year, again, 4,191. That's up by two from 24. And this shows a six-year span dating back to FY '20 with a dip in FY '21 due to COVID. But it shows that we've held pretty steady, even ticked up with our, with our ridership. I'm just showing that, you know, the program as a whole is healthy and, and families are accessing our, our school buses. I don't know if I got kicked off there or...
Let me know if you can't reconnect and I'll see if I can get one.
Here we are.
There you go.
Okay. So we begin bus registration in April of each year, or April, so we started in April of '24 for our FY '25 transportation. April, she, she's, she takes a, this, this is a, a big task for her. We get it started early April. We always open it the first available day in April. This year was April 3rd. And our goal really is to help families register who want to, want transportation for the following year to do so by the end of June. So our target is April, May and June, and that is where we get most of our registrations. We do close down the registration for July and just because there isn't a lot of movement there and we're able to do some work in other areas during that month. We do reopen it in August for the, for the school year opening. This is often late registrations, people who did not get it in prior to the June 30th deadline, and it's our new move-ins. So it's families who are new to town who are registering their child for the school bus. This number of 626 registrations in, in August is higher than what we've had in, in recent years. It's a number that we'd like to bring down. The more that we can get signed up in April, May and June, the better it is for Bob and his team to be building the routes over the course of the summer. So the closer we get to the start of the school year, the more agita it creates for Bob and his team around making sure that all of our students have, have a bus stop come first day of school. Our late buses, this is actually a very good news story, something that's very exciting to us. Our late buses went into effect on September 16th for the 2024-2025 school year. We have three buses for Shrewsbury High School and three buses for Oak and Sherwood Middle Schools. And families can sign up for late bus access through a district Google form and go in, type in their child and the, the date that they're looking to ride. And from there, it's, it's free to them transportation that allows students to stay late at school for whatever various activities, extra help, whatever it may be. Bus stops here are regional, are regional, and we do make sure that we're focusing some of the regional stops at some of our larger, our larger apartment complexes and such, just to make sure that there's equitable access for all students to access after-school activities, which I know is a, a very big priority for our school committee. The estimated cost for the late bus service for us is $69,404. This was previously funded through Esser3 as a way to provide additional support in, in the spirit of Esser. We did, based on the participation and appreciation of the program and the advocacy of school committee, we did add it to the appropriated budget for FY '25. So some numbers from last year, Shrewsbury High School averaged 118 riders per week. Some weeks, beginning of the school year, short weeks have, you know, much less than 118, which means that some of the five-day weeks during the school year had a lot more than 118. So it's a very healthy number of riders for the late bus. Oak and Sherwood Middle Schools averaged 77 riders per week. Again, same difference around beginning of the year. But again, these are very healthy numbers to, to see that many students being able to stay after school for whatever activities they may have is, is really good to see. Okay. So that's a, a brief overview of our transportation and contract for, with AA for this fiscal year, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you so much. Alex, questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions.
Sure.
I have, first of all, thank you for the report. This is a lot of information. I don't envy any of you for having to deal with the buses and angry parents that are calling because they missed the, the window to sign up, which has been me before. This is a lot of work and this is really important to making sure that kids have transportation to and from school because that, one, we want them in school, but two, it does have an effect on families, making sure they get to work and, and whatnot. So my first question is for Bob. Do we see a lot of turnover in bus drivers or do you have a lot of bus drivers that they come back year after year? Because I know that for us, we've had the same bus driver for the last three years and she's amazing and the kids love her and she knows them by name. And it's comforting to me that if I'm running late, she knows that she'll wait for the kids to get off to the bus. And I think that's a really good thing to have that relationship with families, trusting that you're putting these kids in their driving way on a bus with somebody that you don't necessarily know. But do we have in Shrewsbury, like a pretty good track record with keeping bus drivers?
Very good track record. Success story, Bus 24 Tom, just finally graduated after teasing us for five, six years. Every year, his wife finally let him go at 91. Amazing story. And the driver who took over his route, she said, "This is awesome because of how the families and the kids are so," lack of a better word, groomed. You know what I mean? But no, that we have a lot of drivers that stay a long time. We have new drivers that are new to the training program, got their license, came on board and they've assimilated well. But I would say we have about 85, 90% of these drivers have been all around a long time. And it's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
I was talking to Bob on day one and at the high school where they all arrived and it was much more organized and he's, and his words were, "It's because we have, most of the drivers we had last year are with us again this year." And that really goes a long way.
They know the process. It wasn't painful at Oak and Sherwood in the first week in the bus loop. There's a lot to learn. And we work really hard with the new drivers to show them how it works. And, you know, it was a lot smoother. Not as many phone calls. But yeah, to answer your question, we do have drivers that's, they stick around. They stick around Shrewsbury, Lake Street. They do like the, the routes. They like the town and, you know, I think they like the management.
I'm sorry, April, were you going to say something? Did I cut you off? No. So from the switch in the software that we, we used, did this cut down? So how did it change things from going from one software to the other? Did it change how long the buses are out on their routes? Did it give us, like, cut down major roads during high-traffic times? Like what, how did that help you creating the, the bus schedules for us?
Would you like that?
I think overall, the whole software is more 21st century in our eyes. The old was a chance in terms of distance calculation is off. So now we find out, like, this distance calculation is more accurate, especially in our district, two miles and, you know, over two miles, 2.01, K to six. Kids can ride for free. So that two-mile calculation is critical. So we found that was a chance was not as accurate. Plus it's not like a mapping system. Like now we can see 3D and all those. So kind of like real driving. So it's, it's pretty neat software. We're still learning. We're still discovering new features and everything. So it's still too early for us to really, like, it takes time for us really feel like, oh, we nailed it. So hopefully next year, I think we are still constantly learning. We're still, like, this coming Friday will be our next, like, last training with the trainer. So we have, but we have the library of, like, in the community page, we have library of videos we can watch and to get better. This year, we just, like, our first priority is to get all the kids on the bus. But we, we will look deeper into, like, how we can, you know, where, where we can change to make things better, more efficient.
And then, sorry.
Oh, sure.
So the, um, the registrations that happened in August and September. So I know that, Chris, you had said there was a higher number than we necessarily want to see it at. Do we have data on, was that for the families that signed up, was it more so maybe new kindergarten or new completely to Shrewsbury families that maybe they missed communication or they get it later? You know, if you're just starting with Shrewsbury Public Schools? Or do we have, was it kind of all over the place, like?
It is a mix of, uh, late registrations. Sometimes families says, "I'm terribly sorry. I just, you know, things get in the way." I said, "I understand. Life gets in the way." But I always make sure that, tell them, "Next year, could you please sign up and register, like, register the kids in April or May? Don't wait until last minute because I don't want you to pay the late fee." You know, because parents could be, like, not happy to pay the late fee. But I said, "We send you so many reminders. As, as parents, I'm sure you see my, like, my email a lot reminding people, please do register by June 30th." And we did see more new families moving to town because we are proud to be in Shrewsbury. Somewhere, like, I don't know where, people got the information, were rated number five in terms of, like, most, like, what, what do you say, livable or something kind of?
Desirable.
Just, you know, best places to live in whole nation. So we got, we do see new move-ins, yeah, more than previous years. Thank you.
I would say, like, God bless a bus driver. I don't think that's an easy job at all. I remember my kids are on the buses. And I think to what Rachel said, like, having that consistency and retention. I know our neighborhood has, she's a gem. She knows the students. She knows the families. She knows the cats, the dogs. Like, she knows everyone. And it, she doesn't miss a trick, which is great, and the kids are safe. And it's, it's a comfort too, and everybody loves her. So it's a, it's a great working relationship with families. Now that we have the highest number ever of students driving, not driving, students on buses, I'm wondering if there's been a reduction in traffic at the high school or the middle school. I haven't seen anything on Facebook yet about it. So I'm wondering if having more on the buses is helping and if anybody's heard anything.
Yeah, we've been monitoring the light at the bottom of Shrewsbury High School around the start of the school day. What we noticed last year was the first couple of weeks, people were getting to school earlier. And then as you start to get your routines, it starts to back up towards the 7:55 start time. We're still waiting for that to happen and it hasn't happened as quickly as we thought it might. So that might speak to that.
Be helpful. Good.
Right.
And I think my, my last comment is around, Mr. Girardi spoke about, you know, we do have a fee and we've talked a lot about fees, $320. It's a, it's a lot of money, I think, for families. And, but it is also a small portion of the total cost of busing, which is an important thing to get students to and from school safely. So as we look at fees going forward, I think this is something, you know, we, we're mindful of for families and, but it is also an essential piece of getting students to school. So thank you for everything that you're doing and I think it's very successful. And it's great to hear that we, we don't need any drivers. Knock on wood, right?
Yes, heaven.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments and my colleagues. Really want to appreciate you joining us as, as well this evening. I think the, the piece that I'm thinking a lot about too is as the late bus starts again. And it was wonderful for my middle school to kind of be able to do some of the activities and join a club and then still be able to get home and not have me in the middle of my workday trying to figure out how to make that, make that happen. And so I'm really excited to see it start up again. I'd love to maybe at some point, a little later in the year, Mr. Girardi, understand like where those numbers are this year as compared to last year. Obviously, it only opened up recently, but also thinking, Dr. Sawyer, I saw, I saw your notice that came out on Parent Square a couple of weeks ago. It'd be great to see it in some of the principal's announcements too, because I know it's sort of another thing, like, "You registered for the bus, never registered for the late bus." And, and I'm, I'm sure, I, as I was thinking about it, the Sherwood Curriculum Night, they were just announcing, you know, the, the after-school events will be coming next week. And so we're just getting into some of those activities that aren't athletics, but that are the clubs and the activities. And so it'd be great to make sure that those dollars continue to be well-spent and they're, you know, helping kids get to where they, and, and join those activities. So, but I love my bus driver. I love all of my bus services. Very happy with them all. Everything is great. Everything is awesome. Would love to see more kids on the late bus if we can continue to make sure that that's a, that that's an important place for us to invest those dollars.
Yeah, for late bus, actually, it's high demand.
Yeah.
People started to ask about late bus in summer, like in July.
Yeah.
"When are we going to start later? When are you going to start?" I said, "Let, let the dust settle a little bit and we'll get those rolling." So, yeah, it was...
Even as I'm saying to you, I'm like, "Oh, I haven't signed up for the late bus yet." So like, I don't know, like, it's, it's just, it is another thing, right? So I'm a parent who's sitting here going, "You haven't done it yet." But then, then I thought, "Well, they haven't started and my daughter hasn't asked." But she's going to suddenly one Monday and say, "Can I take the late bus?" And we need to have done our homework too. So it's just, parent reminders are somewhat chronically needed to get us to do the things that we're supposed to do. So thank you for all, for all of your efforts.
And in terms of the numbers, we do have a Google Sheet shared with AA.
Great.
Bobby is updating every day on daily basis.
Okay.
And we can see the same sheet.
You'll have a new one tomorrow.
Today was a strong day over 50 kids.
Really? Wow. Okay.
There's always one bus route that is strong. They call in the numbers on the radio. "Today was 28, winner." 28, that's a big number on AA late bus.
All right. Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the reports. I appreciate it. There's a lot of coordination that happens. I appreciate the partnership with AA Transportation and all the coordinated management Ms. Yu and Mr. Girardi do to make this work. There are a lot of moving parts. I don't think people realize and appreciate how much it takes to pull off transportation in the district. As we've been talking, I realized that my emails and my texts have reduced significantly because I don't have any more kids in the district. I don't get your bus registration updates, of which there are several, I know, during the time for bus registration. So the communication is always exceptional, but I do miss those texts, not being a parent in the district anymore. So there's some great news stories here. Obviously, the bus route's being filled. You know, we've heard over the years, not so much... route's being filled. You know, we've heard over the years, not so much in Shrewsbury, but in other districts, having challenges filling the bus routes with drivers. I do love the fact that we have long-tenured drivers as well that make the connection with students and families. That goes a long way as well. And then, I mean, I know we've made that late bus a priority, shifting those funds from S R now to the appropriated budget. And based on the numbers that you shared, about one hundred and ninety-five total students per week on average are taking advantage of that bus to be able to stay after school for extracurricular activities, which is outstanding. And of course, we'd love to see that number continue to increase. So thank you for all that you do. I very much appreciate it. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you, no, Bob, and also hope that A A Transportation and all the drivers, it cannot be overstated of how difficult the situation is in a lot of other districts over the last several years. So to have a vendor as strong as A A Transportation working with us, we're really pleased that they re-upped with their contract with us, and we have a multi-year contract that gives us stability and stability in our workforce in terms of our drivers, because they're the most important element of the quality of the service, for sure. I want to thank Ms. Yu for her tireless work. She's very responsive in getting back to people with questions, making sure she's proactive in communications, and being the key liaison with A A to make sure things run smoothly on a day-to-day basis. And Mr. Girardi for his work, whether that was around the budgeting to get that late bus into the budget and, and, you know, the support the school committee was able to give that, and his oversight of the program in his first year last year, and now certainly, just like our drivers are more familiar with it, Mr. Girardi has a very good working knowledge of the system and is able to make sure it has the support it needs to make sure that things run well day to day. So thank you to all of you, and especially to our drivers, and appreciate the report and all the work. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is also under Finance and Operations. It is a F Y twenty-five personnel update. Ms. Malone will present a report describing personnel processes and new hires in the district for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The report, the report is enclosed in our packet, and Ms. Malone will present and will be available to answer questions from the committee. Welcome, Ms. Malone.
Hello. I screen up. I wanted to make sure it wasn't me that was kicking Mr. Girardi out, but it was not. All right, selectmen's room. Here we go. All right, so the talent acquisition summary for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Our goals were a little different this year. The staff leadership and professional roles, we want the strongest candidates. This was the first year we didn't see as much of a lack of candidates since COVID. The staff paraprofessional roles with the strongest candidates, and increased the diversity of our teams utilizing our Guide to Talent Acquisition, which was rolled out to the district leadership team in February. So with our professional roles, we do have stronger applicant pools. That was something that was remarked to me by a number of principals, that they saw more qualified candidates even when multiple positions were open. They were turning away applicants we would have loved to have seen two or three years ago, but now they're coming back. The positions that we do have open right now are due to late resignations. It's not like they've been open for months and months and months. And so recruiting for this year, you know, we posted to multiple sites, I am Diversity, the college sites, the school spring is still a site we use, and Indeed is certainly a very strong site for us. As we mentioned when we met with the school committee in the spring, job and career fairs did not produce many candidates. And so we're looking more to that networking, building relationships, knowing the professors in the department. Our difficult-to-find professional roles really can be summed up in one thing, special education teacher. I think I made the plea last year for parents to suggest to their children that they might want a career doing this, because that is a perpetual need for licensed, moderate, and severe special education teachers. We are growing some from within, but that just continues to be an ongoing issue. For the paraprofessionals, we're continuing to hire year-round. Indeed is absolutely our best source for paraprofessionals. That's been even more solidified this year. As of September third, twenty-six paraprofessionals were hired. The most number of paras we have hired are in the A B A tech group. More than half are A B A technicians. And we have more A B A techs in process from the last two weeks, so they're just starting to come into the schools. And we have more. You know, we're still working. And most of the roles are filled now. I'd say all of them are filled for our current needs, but some of the staff haven't started yet. So they're, they're getting into the, the positions, but they might have, they might be working on a notice at, at another place. Our diversity, when all was said and done, this was an improved year, looking across all roles, twenty-five percent self-identified in the diverse categories, and that's up from nineteen percent the previous year for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And it was twelve percent professional roles were in diverse categories, and that was up from eleven percent last year. So as Dr. Sawyer mentioned earlier, in the goals, we're going to continue the teacher diversification project because we're seeing it, that results, refining what we're doing, figuring out what works, what doesn't work. So we're seeing success with that. These are just the, the numbers to date, and really, this was by September third, because the, the paraprofessionals have changed since then. But the district leadership team, six, you can see it on the screen there, sixty-nine professional level, paraprofessional, twenty-six, one I T, that was a network manager. And we have two payroll specialists that started with the retirements of the previous two payroll specialists that we had. Altogether, it's a hundred and four. Ironically, that's exactly what we had in this report last year. But last year, it was weighted over to paraprofessionals. This year, it was weighted over to the professional level hires. Very brief report, but I really do have to thank a number of people for what they've done to bring these folks on board. The town of Shrewsbury, educators, parents, students who participate or serve on search committees. Our district leaders do an excellent job. Lots of really good, smart questions along the way, and really being thoughtful about who they're bringing in the door. I have to, first and foremost, thank my direct team, Lindsay Stachowski, the H R manager, and Sherry Robbins, who's the H R assistant. And then our two new payroll folks have, that Mr. Girardi hired, have come along very quickly and have become invaluable very quickly. Erica Anderson and Kelsey Johansson Bryant, Liz Tedesco, who works with Amy Clouter in the curriculum department, and Nick Hawes, who's employed by the town of Shrewsbury and works in benefits. But they all deserve giant thank-yous because it takes a lot of hands in the pot to bring, you know, every one of these people on, on board. And then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I will just leave this showing people how to apply for positions. With Shrewsbury, all roles, you can apply through schoolspring.com. You can also apply through indeed.com. We post everything there. And then we have email boxes for A B A techs and child-specific assistants. Lindsay really handles the day-to-day substitutes. And for the most part, I handle the teachers, although this year Lindsay was very involved with Dr. Sawyer in bringing in the last ten or so hires that came into the district. So we'll leave that there, and people can see that if they're interested, and if you have any questions.
Great. Thanks so much for the report. Colleagues, questions, comments?
Thank you, Bob, and good marketing, leading that up during this. But I think, you know, your report shows we remain a desirable district. People are coming here at all levels, and we have to turn some away because we're, it's good to see that we're getting such qualified candidates for all of these roles. So I, I think for us as a district, to remain desirable, to bring people in for those roles that we need help in is, is a plus. And thank you to you and all your staff, because I know just from sitting in sometimes on the candidate, it's, it's a tough process. We, we make sure that we do get the best people to fit our needs. So it's a lot of time and effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Heffernan, you?
Barb, I can't help but notice that this is a report of a hundred and four searches completed, as we also announced your retirement. And so I just need to take a moment to know the appreciation that we all particularly have for you. I think we spend more time with you than people might realize. A lot of late evenings, not here and in other rooms with us, helping us sort of navigate many things related to the operations of this district and the incredible staff that we have, but the work it takes to, to get them here and to keep them here and to, and to work through all the challenges. So I just really offer my appreciation, both for the report and for the work.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for the report and echo Ms. Heffernan's sentiments. Certainly been a pleasure working with you over the last nine years. I know it's early in the school season, so we've got time. But.
Many months to go.
Yes, exactly. But yeah, it's, it's, it's just been a pleasure, for sure. And I think a hundred and four staff hiring is like a magic number, because we hired the same number, according to your report, last year. So that's, it's fascinating. But there's a lot of work that goes into recruiting and hiring and onboarding. And in addition to thanking you, your entire staff, and those that, that partner with us on onboarding such a high number to get us started for the, the school year. So thank you so much for the report. Appreciate it. Dr. Sawyer, any further questions?
I just want to thank Barb for the report, certainly, and for her and her team for orchestrating all of these new hires for this particular school year. I was very impressed, you know, I, I meet with all of the professional educator staff before I appoint them, and really a very highly qualified and, and high-quality group of educators. I know that, speaking to principals, they've been very pleased with the quality of the paraprofessional staff who are coming on board new as well. And that's something that, again, it's the lifeblood of our organization are the people who do the work day-to-day with our students in the schools, as well as those who orchestrate that work at a district level or in other sorts of leadership roles. And again, I think we're really pleased that our process, while a demanding one, really shows candidates that we care deeply about, who we're bringing on board, and making sure that we are finding folks who share the values of the school district and are committed to our priorities and the, and the really important work that we, that we have to do. So again, thank you for the report and all the work to make this happen, and to you and your team, and everybody who participates across the district in, in the hiring process.
Great. Thanks so much. The next item on our agenda is listed under New Business. It was regarding the superintendent's goals. At Dr. Sawyer's request, we are moving this agenda item to our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, October ninth. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the school committee workshop held on September ninth, two thousand twenty-four enclosed. And the minutes from the school committee workshop held on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four were provided under separate cover. Any edits or revisions to make? There being none, they'll be approved as written. And then we do need to go into executive session tonight. So let me get to the right page. So as a result of needing to go into executive session, I do need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Sections twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-two F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators. Purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved, second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Farifabour?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.